Like to call to order, meeting of the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting Wednesday, June 4th, 2025. We'll begin with the moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic, which is sand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
We'll begin our meeting with public participation on agenda items only. Just a reminder, we have a three-minute cap on that. And we are being livestreamed. Anyone for public participation on agenda items today? Seeing none. Approval of minutes. We have the workshop and legislative minutes before us for approval as commissioners. Do I have a motion for May 14th and May 21st? Still moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Salary board approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings, Mr. Haggerty.
On Tuesday, June 3rd, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding tax assessment and the potential waiver of ordinarily required insurance on the part of a prospective grantee.
Any questions for Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none. We'll move on to election board. Point of order, I am not the chairman of election board, so I will hand over the gavel to the chairman. And he can gavel on election board.
Call to order the election board meeting of Wednesday, June 4th, starting out first by a public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to comment on election board items today before us? Seeing none, Mr. Spackman? Good morning.
Good morning. Since last meeting, we have completed the counting of the write-in votes. There were seventy contests with write-in winners. Today, following final certification, we will mail letters and necessary paperwork for these candidates to either accept or decline the nominations. The candidates accept, their name will appear on the November 4th, 2025 municipal ballot. If they decline, the office will remain vacant. A full listing of the writings can be found on the Bureau of Registration and Elections website. Following this meeting, there will be a tiebreaker drawing held at the office at 11:30 a.m., specifically in Penbrook Borough's Fourth Ward Inspector of Elections Contest. Simonia Wisnott and Chante. Wisnott both received twelve votes, and they are mother and daughter.
Wow.
Yeah. As there has been no petition for recount or recameras or any other court order, I respectfully request that the Board of Elections provide final certification of the results from the Dauphin County Municipal Primary held on May 20th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Spackman. Is there any questions for Mr. Spackman?
Just a point of clarification. When you send out these notifications, when you receive a yes, obviously they go on. You receive a no, they do not. What if you receive no response?
We take that as a no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So no response indicates a no.
Correct.
The reason I ask is the way the postal service is some days, sometimes stuff doesn't get there.
Absolutely.
By a particular time. So we take that into consideration, though, and accept that as a no.
Yeah. So it is thirty days is the timeframe.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Spackman? All right. I guess the order of business is entertain a vote for the final certification of the votes cast on the May 20th, 2025 general primary.
Summed.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
None.
All right, this time, is there any public comment on election board items? Any public comment on election board items? Yep. Mr. Connelly. Public comment.
Okay. I wasn't sure as you guys were talking. Tom Connolly, 345 North Harrisburg Street. I had raised some concerns last week that had to do with the election. I had an opportunity to do some research on that. I did send an email, 355 this morning. I apologize, I did not send it to Commissioner Hartwick because I wasn't sure about what duties you were performing, but I realized that had to do with the...
We're all on the board.
Wrong board. Okay, so I will send that to you when I go back to sit down here. But clearly, we have a problem. The leadership pack was not posted yesterday at 9:30 in the morning. It was posted later in the day, so I appreciate that. There's insufficient amount of funds in that Dauphin County Leadership Pack to have performed the incredible influencing they did in the election. Multiple mailers, they had a minimal amount of money. They spent more of that than that. Previously, when they did disclose, it was $27,000 in one period. Their balance was 516, and it went to 5,500. So in no way did they do anything proper, and they sent multiple mailers within the 24-hour reporting period. So, you know, someone's going to say, well, they didn't have to file, maybe they filed with the state. They influenced an election in this cycle. And I looked up people in this room who were also in this cycle and other cycles, and you've all disclosed, you've all said what you did. There's no election where there are signs on every corner in a community. Mailers, multiple mailers, nice mailers, good mailers, excellent campaigning, and yet not one cent of it was recorded by Commissioner Tucker Zubek. And I did check that again last night, and they don't have anything. Their opponent, who had limited funds, was listed. The Democrats did the under $250 filing. There's not one thing on there. So if you live in Swatira Township and you saw the magnitude of the election that just took place by the incumbents, and you go to the website for the people that control the election, this group here, and Mr. Spackman, you will think nothing happened because not one single thing was recorded. Is it possible they hadn't spent any money up till May 5th? It could be. But I sent in with what I sent last night, the candidates thanking people for the contributions on the dates before May 5th and after May 5th. So if anybody from Leadership Pack says the candidates didn't know, they're going to be an absolute outright liar. If anybody would attempt to recommend that the district attorney look at this, we have a huge problem here. Because the pack that didn't go online until sometime yesterday, well after, the filing date was the ninth, filed the ninth, if not, I got to pay $250 come that day because the fines are coming. But the same signature that's on the pack that didn't follow the rules is the person who filled out Franch Rado for Judge. The exact same person who also filled out the Dauphin County Republican Committee. It's the same person. And ironically, if you look at it, you can bring it up, it's the only person that scribbles a signature and then doesn't print their name or put a phone number. So it's very evasive. If I walked in there with something incomplete, Mr. Spackman, the professional, would say, you need to do it properly. I sent you thirty documents and screenshots only because it cut off at thirty. I will get it to the chief of staff. I didn't realize you were listed on that. But I'm going to sit here today and send that. So anybody that says, we'll give it to the district attorney, we got a huge problem. The district attorney is up for election and is using the same person to fill out his reports that didn't do it properly.
And Mr. Connelly, I've not had a chance to review.
I apologize.
What you simply make sure that I'm included on those in the future. I'd be better prepared to respond, but I'd open up to my colleagues to see if they did have a chance to review and respond.
Well, my initial response is, what time did you send out this morning?
355.
I have not.
Yeah.
I have not started that email yet. But as a result of what you had brought up last week, we as a board had asked Mr. Spackman to look into that and do a summary for us, which he has provided us with an email. We could get an update on that, Mr. Spackman.
I can move if he's coming up to give the update. And I would like to, since I was the one that requested it, I know since then, another person has filed, sent an email to Mr. Spackman describing similar...
If I could, I know we prepared a response, maybe a formal response back would be appropriate to what you have. And so we can all review what you sent, give us a fair opportunity to be able to forward that to Mr. Spackman so we're able to get you an accurate response.
No, I appreciate that I'm saying, but if he had a response prepared for now, I'm moving away so he can either read it or...
Again, I've not seen what you sent, and I don't know what the additional allegations are. So from my perspective, from at least being in this position right now, we should be able to respond based upon the full breadth of the allegations?
I would prefer hearing, giving Mr. Spackman an opportunity. He spent time on his schedule to evaluate this and research it.
Be glad to do that.
And he's already provided us with an email. I would like to hear from Mr. Spackman and give him an opportunity to stay on top of this instead of falling another week behind.
Have no problems with that, Mr. Spackman. Please, please come to the table.
And...
I have the memo that you provided based upon those issues. Do you have that with you?
Yes.
Okay. Obviously, can you respond to both those concerns that were a part of a previous meeting? And obviously, I don't know if you had a chance to review and respond to what was sent today, but if you don't have a response for that, at least provide the response that was brought up in the last election board meeting.
Absolutely.
And Director Spackman, something we have discussed, I think, would be beneficial from the public, if you don't mind, is sort of outlining, you know, any specific allegations aside, what our role and authority is at the county versus other jurisdictions, I think would be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, with that, I'd just like to read the memo.
Sure.
So with regards, and this is from perspective, this was after the last meeting. So with regards to the comments made by Tom Connolly, Commissioner from Swatira Township at the most recent election board, again, the last election board, I write off a response from this office. Mr. Connolly previously stopped by in person at the Bureau of Registration and Elections and asked hypothetical questions on whether candidates are required to report in-kind contributions under the 24-hour reporting requirement that candidates report contributions of $500 or more after the second Friday pre-election report was completed and up until the day of the election. Responded that I cannot give legal advice. However, as always been the advice given from my office, if in doubt, you should file. As is required under the election code, it is the duty of this office to make from time to time inquiries and field investigations with respect to reports, statements filed under provisions of this article and with respect to alleged failures to file any report or statement required under provisions of this article. The Dauphin County Leadership Pack has regularly filed copies of the campaign finance reports they file with the Department of State to our office. Specifically, the second Friday pre-primary report for 2025 was filed before the deadline. Committees that are spending money to influence offices that file with the county are required to file their committee registration with that county file reports. Dauphin County Leadership Pack did not file the registration statement with Dauphin County. However, copies of these reports were filed with the county as well as the Department of State. Dauphin County viewed these reports as courtesy copies similar to the requirements that candidates for a state office are required to file courtesy copies with the county they live in. However, in light of the fact that Dauphin County Leadership Pack has spent money influencing county offices, the copy of the committee registration was requested, and we planned to post these reports publicly on a website, which we did. As this office routinely seeks compliance, and because the committee has already been filing copies of the reports and originals that were posted on the Department of State's website, we believe this matter is closed. For the in-kind contributions, it is unclear to me if the candidates were firstly aware of the in-kind contributions they were made and if they are obligated to report under the 24-hour reporting period requirement. For this, I would recommend district attorney make that determination as that office is better suited for this role. I was informed by the Dauphin County Leadership Pack that candidates were not notified. However, again, as far as, and that's the last of my statement, but reference to Chief Court Haggerty's comments, the election office's duty is not to prosecute any alleged campaign finance violations, and the appropriate next step is to refer to the district attorney's office as required by the law.
So I guess my question is, you said that the matter's closed. What part of it is closed?
The posting. Yeah, posting with the office.
So you found no egregious activity involving that?
So generally speaking, when it comes to campaign finance reports, our duty is a neutral arbiter, right? We take everything at face value when they file with us. So specifically relating to the committee filing, because they were filing with us, although we had viewed it as a courtesy once that was brought to my attention, and it was not, we're able to rectify that, I think that posted. Again, I have to take everything that comes in front of my office, you know, I'm patient.
I just thought out of fairness to Mr. Spackman and his time, that we allow him to provide a summary of the information that he collected. Obviously, you just heard, he feels a portion of that is unfounded, but the other portion, you're recommending presenting that to the district attorney's office for them to make the determination.
Absolutely. Yeah, I believe that that is outside the purview of my office.
Could I ask just one follow-up question? The, what is the process? And Guy, you may have to come up and answer this. What is the process if there is a concern related to conflict of interest or process related to filing objections based upon what Mr. Spackman has provided here today? You know, if there's further need for an investigation, sort of what is that process? You referred it to the district attorney.
Right, right.
But there was issues raised of a conflict of interest. I just want to know what the process would be to be able to field or raise these objections for me.
So Commissioner, if there would be a conflict of interest determined, then there could be...
Which none of these are for this board to determine, correct?
That's correct. Then there could be a referral made to the Pennsylvania Attorney General, and I would respectfully suggest that Mr. Spackman be given an opportunity to confer with me, and I can, the solicitor's office will make a recommendation to the board in executive session. I think this would be appropriate for an executive session if the board has further questions or concerns. Right now, based upon what I've heard...
Based upon what you're telling me, and without trying to get involved in legal matters in a public meeting, would you suggest that we sort of get back to an executive session at the moment to be able to advise the board legally? Or you think this is still an appropriate conversation to have in public?
I think so far, this is an appropriate conversation to have in public.
Understood. This one to ask to make sure we're not covering any ground that should not be.
I think this is entirely appropriate so far.
Got it.
But I think Mr. Spackman is handling this responsibly. He has conferred with the solicitor's office during this process, and we are always ready to work with him on any of these matters and to follow up with the board in any way necessary.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Spackman? If I'm filling out a form in your office, campaign finance related, and I hand it to you and you see I failed to sign it, or I failed to put critical information on there, not necessarily related to finance, but maybe related to an address or something that should be on there, occasionally I would assume you remind somebody, hey, don't forget to fill that one portion out. But it's not your job to investigate campaign finance forms and determine whether or not they're accurate, right?
Correct.
So when the public makes an accusation of inaccuracies, it's not in your job description to investigate this.
No.
And there's no one in your office that it's their job to investigate campaign finance violations, correct?
Correct.
So wouldn't it just be best for us to refer accusations to a governing body? Again, that might be a legal question for Mr. Benaventana, but I guess I don't think you're necessarily in a position where your job requires this or anyone in your office's job is to do this work. And I don't want to put you in a position where you're having to confirm or deny accusations because I don't necessarily think that's under your particular purview. And I just want to make it clear, as one individual of this board, I have no desire to put you in that position. I think if we get those kinds of inquiries, we should pass them along to the appropriate governing bodies that would investigate accusations like this. And given that we've now heard two weeks of... And uh, given that we've now heard two weeks of accusations, I briefly reviewed the email this morning. I I think it's best for us to hand it off to whoever the appropriate authorities would be.
And and that's what I was trying to get, and I agree.
Thank you.
I agree. Uh, any additional questions by any of the board members? Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spack. All right, is there any additional public comment uh, for the election board?
No, I use my three minutes. I'm on the three forty-five. I'm not disagreeing that they're in compliance now, um, because it was posted yesterday. So as far as that being a problem, um, I don't know that I would say it was unfound. When I said it, it was found. Um, and then a a review and an investigation then resulted in it being added. And it was added sometime yesterday after nine thirty-one because I have a screenshot of the site. So I just want to be clear. What I said was it wasn't there and it wasn't there. Um, and what Mr. Spackman said makes sense that they filed somewhere else on time, but they didn't file with the county or give a courtesy copy. And I want to thank him because I believe it was part of his investigation and review.
Correct.
That resulted in being online so that the citizens of the county can actually look at it and see it now. So that's a positive thing. But um, I don't want you thinking that what I said was unfounded because I said it last week and it was posted yesterday. So I just want to be clear on that. So as far as that part being resolved, I I fully agree that it is online now.
All right, is there any additional comments? Hearing none, I take a motion for adjournment.
So.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Douglas from meeting adjourned.
We'll head into our directors and guests portion of the commissioners meeting. Um, Salary Board, Cassie Rishinsky.
Good morning.
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 Um, the personnel and salary board packet are both ready for your approval. There were some revisions that were communicated with the board.
We'll begin with Salary Board. Do I have a motion for uh, Salary Board item A?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, the Personnel Packet you had referenced is ready for approval?
Yes.
Do I have a motion for the Personnel Packet?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
Yeah, just verification that everything contained within falls within the twenty twenty-five budgeted numbers.
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Davis, Budget and Finance Director.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out yesterday. I also have no changes to the purchase order packet, other than that one requisition. Purchase order I mentioned last week was pushed through because it involved no change in funding. Um, that is ready for your approval.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the purchase order?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I also have um, with me the proposed fiscal year budget for the period July first of twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty-six. Um, for those at home, this, this is one of our two budget cycles. This covers our human service agencies as well as our hazmat team and the supervision fees that our adult probation department receives from the state. Um, he's run on a fiscal year cycle, although the majority of their funding also runs on the state and or federal fiscal year cycle. Um, for twenty twenty-six, the requested increase as proposed is nine point six million dollars or seven point nine five percent. Um, that's in the overall budget with the total request being a hundred and thirty point seven million. Um, and with the majority of these funds coming from state and federal, um, we have the county fund summary for twenty twenty-five. The request was fourteen point three million. For twenty twenty-six, that is up to sixteen point four million, um, or approximately two point one million increase. Um, the majority of that, or really all of it being our children and youth department, who has seen just a huge uptick in the level of care that the um, children assigned to them are requiring, um, which has also come with heavily increased costs. Um, you'll see on the next page, we have a breakdown um, of the revenue and expenses, um, just showing where the uh, whether it's state, federal or county, um, we do have some other other revenue, um, and the breakdown of expenses between salaries, operating costs and care services.
And just to be clear, this is the presentation of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget, and it will be available for public review for the next twenty days.
Correct.
Prior to uh, the Board of Commissioners taking action.
Correct.
So we're not taking action today. We're just receiving it as uh, ready for the public to comment. Or and and can you maybe speak to how the co- the public goes about finding a budget, whether it's here or online or how that works?
Yeah, so it will be in two places. You'll see this nice white binder will be out in the reception, um, on the desk in our fourth floor lobby here in the admin building. Uh, PDF copy will also be available online at duffincounty.gov/budget so that anyone can review it at home. Uh, following the twenty day inspection period, we'll come back to the board for a vote for.
Great. Any questions of my colleagues?
Comments? Yeah, just uh, the children and youth numbers, the increase of two point one mil- well, the increase in children and youth is two point one million?
In county funds.
In county funds.
Mm-hmm.
And are those mandated coverages and expenditures from a higher level that we have to utilize?
The the majority is due to the placements of the um, due to the severity of the the actions that are resulting in these or requiring secured attention um, and similar placements. So we don't have a choice in where where we get to place them. It's required based on who comes through the system.
Right, so obviously these are decisions made that we have to live by and pay for. Thank you.
It's non-discretionary, in other words.
Correct.
Thank you.
I I've got just a couple of comments related to the budget. Um, the the first one is, um, you know, what we put up as it relates to the county share in this budget is a number to be able to utilize as the pledge to the county share. But doesn't mean that's actually what the county needs to spend at the end of the day to be able to perform these services. Uh, we have been, uh, over the years significantly, um, we've attempted to um, put up a smaller share of county funds in order to leverage federal and state monies in a way that has been really helpful to the agency. Uh, on a positive note, starting out with human services in a strength-based way as we do, uh, adoptions are up. Uh, and the pathway to permanency for dependent kids has been uh, moving in a direction that I think the courts and the agency is thoroughly uh, proud of and and I I've, nobody should be lingering in placement in an dependency situation for a long period of time. They didn't ask to be placed in that situation. And the sooner that our agency is able to find a pathway to permanency and a door where some child does not have to knock one to be able to consider home, uh, the better it is for the child who didn't deserve to be in our system in the first place. So I want to thank staff for for that pathway to uh, uh, really expanding uh, those adoptions and the the pathway to permanency. Uh, on the other side of this coin is, uh, you know, sort of the placements that have increased as a result of, you know, the uptick in the uh, serious juvenile crime. And what I believe is it's really important for us to be out ahead of this curve. Um, the reimbursement rates that we have for uh, the level of placements that we're um, having to encounter because of the high-risk kids happen to be at a fifty split for county, fifty percent split for state care. I think there are several options for us to be able to consider and Dolphin County has always been a leader related to defining the level of new service that we can provide, uh, that may be a bit more secure. Uh, we're also going to have the challenge of the decertification of kids under the new change in the law related there, which is going to put even more of a burden on a placement system that's ill-equipped to provide the level of safe placement. So I would encourage uh, our board as well as the courts to be able to really pull together uh, a a team within juvenile probation and children to be able to identify ways for us to be able to change our thinking around how we are able to securely manage these, this increase in population uh, and not be able to burden the significant share of the county load. I think there are options and creative ways to be able to do that. And I thoroughly hope that with some of the bright minds that we've got in juvenile probation, children, youth, leadership of the courts, uh, we can again be a leader in trying to define the kind of placements that could provide a higher level of reimbursement in partnership with other counties. So this impact would not ultimately be as great on the county share as we move forward for the next year. Just a second piece quickly within the budget I want to talk about. Um, two areas, early intervention, utilization is up. Um, and you know, we have a requirement for kids from zero to five. Uh, it's a federal entitlement program to be able to ensure that these kids get the best possible start. Uh, I for one, Commissioner, will never compromise our ability to make those kind of investments when they're identified. It is critically important that we allow for those kinds of investments in our children who are identified through early intervention. Uh, we do have an obligation to ensure that the states meeting their share and the feds continue to meet their share. Uh, but we've seen an uptick in that expense, which I don't think necessarily is a bad thing related to our future of our community. And I don't want to compromise anybody who's eligible for early intervention services and our ability to serve those individuals. Lastly, we have Mental Health Advocacy Day coming up on Monday of this week, uh, which we're meeting with House and Senate leadership, uh, as well as the administration to talk about a mental health request, uh, that is teetering on the edge of broken and cuts. Uh, we will be asking from both Senate and House leadership and the administration uh, for additional revenues in this year's budget, a hundred million dollars, uh, to be able to allow counties to continue to operate a broken system since the closure of the state hospital. We want to appreciate the administration's investment of twenty million dollars a year over the past two years. It has helped, but it has not done nearly enough related to the investment that's required, uh, with the jails becoming the number one provider of mental health services and the exist, the issues that exist both pre and post pandemic in the mental health area, absent the ability to provide a new investment and substantially more revenues in the area of mental health. Um, I'm concerned that this county will have to propose cuts in order to meet that obligation, uh, and and there will be real harm done. So th- those are the only things I wanted to comment related to the uh, the budgets that that's before us.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, the budget is, will be posted online by the end of the day, probably.
Yep.
Okay? And uh, and will be available in the lobby on the fourth floor.
Correct.
Thank you. Twenty day review period, just. Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, there are several items on today's agenda requiring board action. In terms of general items of business, we have three human service agreements, three adoption assistance agreements, one cons- one custodianship agreement, four children and youth agreements, one area agency on aging agreement, four uh, MHADP agreements, one adult probation agreement, a resolution authorizing parks and rec to apply for a state grant, one tax stipulation relating to a tax appeal, an MOU with the Dolphin County Housing Authority for the Shelter Plus Care Program, two facilities maintenance agreements, a bail- bailment agreement with the city of Har- city of Harrisburg for road closure signs, six partial refunds of real estate taxes, confirmation of the twenty twenty-five pay scales included in the previously adopted budget for this year, one repository bid and authorization to open a new account for Voter Registration Act eighty-eight funds. We also have two tourism grants on the agenda for your consideration, as well as a hundred and sixty-eight annual human service agreements associated with the state's fiscal year beginning July first. Um, couple notes, uh, I want to call out some clerical errors uh, on the agenda that I I apologize for. Uh, after publishing the agenda yesterday, we have since learned that items one twenty-nine and one forty-nine, which are agreements between the Area Agency on Aging and the Ark of Cumberland and Perry Counties are in fact the same agreement, which mistakenly appears twice. Similarly, items one thirty and one forty-six, which are agreements between the Area Agency on Aging and Messiah Lifeways Community Support Services are also the same agreement, which mistakenly appear twice as well. So two of the one hundred and seventy human service agreements in this packet are duplicates and therefore I am striking the duplicated items one forty-six and one forty-nine, which appear on the agenda in error. Additionally, uh, there, we mistakenly transposed the addresses affiliated with items twenty-six and twenty-eight for partial refunds. Thank you, Pam, for noticing this mistake. Item twenty-six, uh, we mistakenly listed the mailing address of the owners instead of the parceling question. So item twenty-six should read seven 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 East Park Drive, Harrisburg, PA. And item twenty-eight should read ten twenty North Union Street, Middletown, PA. That concludes my.
Say the second one again?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Ten twenty-two North Union Street, Middletown, PA.
On on which item, though?
Twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight should be ten twenty North Union Street, Middletown, PA. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Just want to be clear, um, board action is not needed for items one forty-six and one forty-nine because they have struck from the agenda.
Correct.
Okay, is there questions of Mr. Haggerty from my colleagues? Uh, Mr. Haggerty, last week I was informed we might have agreements coming forward for approval, especially considering the importance of getting expedited quotes for tech port building fit-out costs. Do we expect those agreements uh, to appear on a future agenda?
Um, my understanding is that the two uh, firms which are conducting pro bono work to conduct cost estimate analyses are conducting that work in the absence of an agreement and therefore uh, there is no agreement to vote on, which is why those do not appear on today's agenda.
Okay. I understand that this particular work might not be legally required for an agreement. However, we routinely enter into agreements for far less work. Without a formal agreement, how exactly do we hold a vendor accountable for delivering on what they say they're committed to do?
I think uh, that would certainly be up to the board to determine um, whether or not estimates provided meet your expectations in terms of um, the work product discussed that they're conducting for free.
So when they provide us accurate quotes, which I would assume they're going to claim they're accurate quotes for what the work's going to cost, and we move forward on a ten point four million dollar building acquisition utilizing their information, and then the information ends up being inaccurate, maybe even wildly inaccurate. What then? Do we have any recourse since we're not in a contract?
Uh, I suspect that um, the information that would be provided, uh, which we haven't received yet, so this is a little bit of speculation, could be in a couple different manners. One would be um, an estimate of the cost for the original plans for tech port. Could also include um, an estimate of how far a particular budget might go at the property um, based on whatever the board might uh, determine is an appropriate budget for the project. As with any estimate, I'm sure there is some margin of error based on supply chains and market forces and and things like that. Um, I certainly am not qualified to speak to, um, you know, my ability. I I'm not qualified to independently verify cost estimates myself, but of course, you know, it ultimately will be up to the board to determine um, whether or not the information provided is satisfactory.
Well, I for one want to say I'm incredibly thankful to these vendors doing free work for the county. Um, I also want to say you get what you pay for. Uh, and um, it would be the incentive, given the challenges with this particular property, to underbid these so that we are incentivized to enter into and there's no consequence on the backend that I can see to the bid, to to their estimates being wrong, given that they're not under contract for them. Yet, we have bids from every one of these people. We have estimates from every one of these people to be under contract. I I just, what I'm hearing today sounds like more of the same ambiguity that we experienced from December until we missed our closing date. And even with the sixty day extension, which we're already into, to secure these final numbers that are going to help us determine the viability of this project, it continues to lack structure and clarity, at least to my expectation. Um, and I I'm just frustrated by it, but thank you for providing that. So we will not be seeing future and will. You know what? I'll I'll hold my questions. Any other questions, Mr. Haggerty? Solicitor Owens.
All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions, Mr. Owens? Hearing none, we'll move to matters requiring board action. Quickly, I want to state that I would be the preference of the chairman to uh, approve these within the headers in which they're under, meaning the items under each header as we have a very large agenda today. Um, so we'll begin with items one through thirty-two, and I would like to remove item seventeen for a separate vote. Are there any other items to be removed for a separate vote? Hearing none, I'll entertain an uh, a motion for items one through thirty-two. Hearing none, I'll entertain a, a motion for items one through 32 minus item 17.
So moved.
If you have a second. I'll second that with the revisions noted by Mr. Haggerty.
Are you in acceptance of revisions to addresses?
So noted.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 17. Amendment number one, agreement between Dauphin County Adult Probation and Geo Reentry Services for reentry and recidivism services, daily rates per client count, additional costs for group cognitive behavioral treatment, individual cognitive behavioral treatment and LSI R assessments.
Second, for a matter of discussion, forecasting my vote, I want to be clear about why I cannot support this item. The Geo Group is a for-profit prison corporation with a deeply troubling track record. Investigations and lawsuits have highlighted inhumane conditions in their facilities, including the Mo Shanon Valley Processing Center here in Pennsylvania, where immigrant detainees have reported physical mistreatment, barriers to legal access and inadequate medical care. I cannot in good conscience support sending tax dollars to an entity whose business model and practices are so fundamentally at odds with human dignity and justice. For this reason, I'll be voting no today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Move on to items 33 and 34. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Yes, I would, I would like to ask its staff, work with the NAACP on appropriate language for their request for the tourism grant that they have put forth.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carry. We'll move on to the next header, items 35 through 38.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our next header, children and youth, item number 39. Get quite a few of these. 39 through 124, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Area Agency on Aging, we have 125 through 162, but ensuring that, as the chief clerk referenced, 146 and 149 are stricken from the agenda.
I'll make a motion with the items 146, 149 outside.
Second.
And just to be clear, that motion is item 125 through 162.
Correct.
A motion by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mental health, autism and developmental programs, item 163 through 194.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, drug and alcohol, items 195 through items 204.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Former business? New business? Commissioners, discussion and actions, Commissioner Hartwick.
I'd just like to thank Randy Jaeger, human service staff, solicitors and legal staff. This is always a annual undertaking that takes a significant amount of preparation and work. Revisions, changes to insurance language and modifications. I know that there's always ways to make improvements, but I know the amount of labor that's required in all areas. So I wanted to thank the Human Services Directors and the legal team for being able to prepare these ahead of the July 1st deadline. Thank you.
I want to piggyback those comments with thanking our legislative delegation for working on our behalf to go after those dollars that we requested in these areas. Also thanking Randy and her staff and Chris Davis for working together to put together this budget for 2026. And again, as we often do, we did the second vote today for the tabulation certification of the votes for this last election primary. Thanking Chris Beck and his staff and the 1,100 volunteers. Again, without them, who wouldn't be able to run these elections in a fair, safe, efficient, effective manner? It is all them and the great work that they do and our additional staff here at the county that works with them. So much appreciated. Also want to thank safety and security, facility maintenance and the courts for the work that they do to help us run these elections as well. Thank you.
Certainly want to also thank all those in our human services. There's a lot of undertaking, as you can imagine, multi-page agenda like the one that's before you and our commitment to trying to provide more detail to the public about these. It certainly jam packs an agenda and so I want to thank, you know, human services for all of their efforts over the last few, you know, months preparing all of this. And then on top of it are Clerk's Office, especially Jess and, and Legal as they're working on getting it on the agenda the accurate way. There's a lot behind the scenes that goes into that and very appreciative for, for all of their work. I want to take a moment to highlight the Tour de Belt, which I had the privilege of participating in this past weekend right here in Harrisburg. You can see a photo here of myself, Anthea's in the photo as well. We've got some Parks and Rec employees, I believe a drug and alcohol employee. It was a great ride. You know, for those of you who might not be familiar, the Tour de Belt is an annual community ride that showcases the Capital Area Green Belt, a roughly 20 mile trail system encircling the city that connects parks, neighborhoods and natural areas across Dauphin County. I want to thank the organizers who put a ton of effort into this, the volunteers, the community partners who continue to invest in maintaining and improving this vital resource. It really is a treasure, I believe, for our region, the, the green belt. And, you know, seeing it all together, that's actually the first time I've had the opportunity to ride the entire green belt and see it all at once. I've, I've done parts of it, whether that's running or biking and, and to be able to see it all. It really is a national treasure for us, I think, just such a, a great place to, to see the river, to see some of these historic landmarks and to be out in nature. And so I think it's just a testament to us continuing to find ways to invest in, you know, these green spaces and these spaces that provide recreation for our constituents here in Dauphin County. With that, I will go into some other comments. Last week during public commissioners' comments, Commissioner Hartwick made serious and unfounded accusations against me, even requesting a criminal referral of conduct to the DA and AG. Let me be clear, I categorically deny any wrongdoing. These allegations are not only false, but they are also an attempt to distract from legitimate questions about transparency, accountability and the use of taxpayer dollars in Dauphin County. And now Commissioner Hartwick is upset because the media discovered that a county employee who no longer works here showed up to work intoxicated and refused testing. So he is pointing fingers and claiming others must have committed crimes. He's just upset that transparency reveals a double standard. When public officials are uncomfortable scrutiny, it says more about their actions than it does about those asking questions. I welcome any inquiry by the district attorney, the attorney general or the state ethics commission. I have nothing to hide and will fully cooperate should I be asked to, should I be asked to participate. Despite the recent accusations, the reality is this, asking tough questions, inspecting contracts closely, often while investigative journalists are doing the same, has brought long overdue transparency to county operations. While my colleague said last week, our focus must return on governing, governing, I want to assure the public my scrutiny of conflicts of interest isn't a liability to the county, it is a public service. It is essential to governing. Here's just some of what has come to light because someone was willing to look a little closer, ask some questions and shine the light of transparency. How about the VHH consulting agreement between Mike Musser and Community Networking Resources, where Mr. Musser was paid $870,000 by the county tourism agency since 2012. His contract grew in value as county funding to the agency increased. No public disclosure of this arrangement was made until November of 2024. Musser previously served as campaign manager for county commissioners, raising major red flags about insider access and potential misuse of taxpayer dollars. How about Mr. Musser's gaming board liaison role that he was paid? Mr. Musser served as gaming board liaison overseeing county casino fund allocations, held influence over millions of public dollars, his political ties and consulting history raised conflict numerous concerns. The role amplified concerns about fairness and transparency for funding decisions. How about Musser's RDA contract? That's the Redevelopment Authority for the State Grounds Hospital. Musser was hired by the RDA to consult on acquiring State Grounds Hospital. The RDA failed to obtain the property, yet payments to Musser continued. He was paid for years despite the contract's purpose no longer being valid. And what's interesting about that is how does the RDA get funded? Because they don't have a funding stream. Gaming money, who he's also the consultant of in that. How about Musser's library contract? That's actually a new one. I confirmed it yesterday, in fact. For years, Musser was under contract, $3,000 a month to help the library. What corner of the county was Musser not under contract for? And I'm not even going into all of the things for Mr. Musser and for Community Networking Resources. We'll, we'll switch to Commissioner Hayes when we're talking about transparency and what it's revealed in this county. Undisclosed employment of his wife, Maria Hayes, by VHH. Maria Hayes, the wife of the chairman of the Board of Commissioners at the time, Jeff Hayes, worked as a paid contractor for VHH while Jeff Hayes approved its funding. Her employment was never publicly disclosed. Hayes approved billions in allocations benefiting his wife's employer. It's a serious conflict of interest and ethical breach of public trust. Talk about the bridge contract that was influenced, where, you know, Commissioner Hayes called our offices to talk about who he would prefer to be on the board. The contract went to a firm he previously worked for, raising questions about whether he had a financial stake in the outcome. Again, transparency, these would not be out in the open. Or the NRA outdoor show that the former Dauphin County Commissioner was hired to serve as the liaison to get $5,000 a month, $60,000 a year. And why was he hired? Because the show was at threat of going somewhere else. Only problem is, when reached for comment, the NRA confirmed that they were never thinking about going anywhere else. They loved Dauphin County. So a decision was made, lacking proper vetting and due diligence, to hire a liaison at $60,000 a year. No RFP was done, no RFP was done for any of this, by the way. And give it to a former commissioner. How about Silver Maple LLC? Jeff Hayes co-managed Silver Maple LLC with lobbyist Stan Rapp while he was in office, while he was sitting in this chair. Rapp's firm, Greenlee Partners, held contracts with the county. This relationship was never disclosed. Serious ethical concerns when you have a public official in business with a county paid lobbyist that has an auto renew contract annual. How about Hayes renting from Coroner Hetrick? Commissioner Hayes rented property, I will assume rented, I don't know, maybe it was provided from Coroner Graham Hetrick while both were in office. Financial relationship was never disclosed to the public, raising questions about internal favoritism and it opens up all kinds of potentials for quid pro quos. Another example of blurred lines for the potential of personal gain. How about the solar farm scandal? Built on the land owned by Coroner Hetrick, where Commissioner Hayes lived. The county bought the land without an independent appraisal. Sounds kind of familiar when we're talking about tech port. Vendors tied to Hayes profited while taxpayers took a loss. The project has lost a lot of money and is now being sold off at a loss. It's a textbook case of insider deal, lack of oversight and fiscal failure. Let's continue. Commissioner Hayes consulting for Prime Care. Commissioner Hayes secretly consulted for Prime Care while serving as commissioner, and I say secretly because apparently no one around here knew it. Prime Care held contracts for prison healthcare during that time. The largest contract, by the way, for Dauphin County. And Hayes' role was never disclosed to the public during that time consulting for Prime Care. More than a dozen inmates died at Dauphin County prison. And their contract grew monetarily. Do I need to tell everyone it's a massive conflict of interest if I were to be employed by a vendor of the county? Like, a kindergartner could see that conflict of interest. Exactly how can one advocate for better healthcare for our inmates while they're also being paid by the same entity that they should be calling for an audit, a review or an RFP? Yet 38 years without an RFP and without an audit while people die. How about Hayes' down payment on his home? I'm just going through the greatest hits here, guys. This is the last year and a half. Hayes received a payment from Prime Care's owner, Carl Hoffman, while serving as commissioner, over $200,000 that he reportedly used on a down payment for a home. Prime Care again had the largest contract in the county. Literally giving large sums of money to the chairman of the Board of Commissioners. And I have to sit up here and act like that being a deep ethical breach is somehow revelator. It's not revel, it's obvious. And Musser and Hayes just happened to find their way on the tax assessment board. That's right. Chair and vice chair of the tax assessment board, the place you go if you would like to have your taxes reconsidered, how much you pay for real estate tax reconsidered. One of only two boards in the county that pay its board members. Their political and campaign connections make you wonder if the valuations of property and decisions were made in the best interest of the public or favoritism. At the very least, appointing two individuals to such influential boards opened up the potential for abuse and preferential treatment given all of their other connections. I'd remind my colleagues, both of them joined me in voting to remove Hayes from all of his boards if transparency is frivolous. I, I was supported in that. Here's the truth, transparency is finally cracking things open in Dauphin County. And believe me, this is just the beginning. I don't have to dig far. Every week anonymous tips roll in telling me exactly where to look and when I do, I rarely find a gray area. It's usually a blatant conflict or an outright corrupt reality. So let me be clear. If you had a hand in any of it, it's only a matter of time before the dots get connected. I can lead this board and clean house at the same time and I hardworking residents struggling to get by don't want to hear elected officials whining about Penn Live doing its job. What they want is honesty, something this government has been allergic to for decades while insiders line their pockets. People in our community are scraping by trying to save for a home, yet a sitting commissioner had no problem using their elected seat to get money for a down payment on a home. And I'm the one who looks crazy because I'm angry about it. To anyone more upset about transparency than corruption, maybe it's because you know the truth is catching up and trust me, time has a way of exposing things. Let me be clear, I won't be bullied into silence. I'll get louder. And for doing exactly what I was elected to do, I will continue. I'm here to fight for the people of this county, not the insiders, not the power players and definitely not those who think they're untouchable. And yes, I'm keeping receipts of who's standing in the way of truth and who's helping expose it. My focus is exactly where it should be, getting things done for the people, demanding answers and dragging transparency into every corner of this government, whether it's liked or not. And to make a criminal referral of me? Make all the criminal referrals of me you want. But I'll remind you, there's only one commissioner facing criminal charges right now. Correspondence will be received by the chief clerk. Public participation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a statement as a result of your, right, long statement that you made. Another week, and I continue to wonder, will this board work together to get things accomplished? Or are my colleagues going to disparage each other, meeting after meeting, week after week in a public setting? The residents elected us to govern on their behalf. One and a half years into this administration, they are still waiting and I am still waiting. With all due respect,
With all due respect, all the information you brought up, the only thing that has not been publicly put out there and covered by the media was the library board contract. So thank you for bringing that forth, but I think it's time for the three of us to work together. The residents are demanding it. We don't seem to be listening to their pleas.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. I'll begin with Antonio Foster and Tom Connolly's on deck and then Gene Stilp.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name's Antonio Foster, 594 Chambers Street. I'm obviously here last time, I realize three minutes ain't a lot of time, so I'm gonna try to be as quick as possible and I may jump around a little bit. I'm gonna pick up off where I started at, I'm gonna pick up where I was at last time. The police, I don't want to say the police, I want to say this group because all police ain't bad. But this group's front runner, I'm putting names out there because things have to be done. People can't be scared anymore, that's what the issue is. And I ain't gonna be nobody's victim, I'll be an advocate before I be somebody's victim. So their front runner is Antoine Neil slash Antoine Jackson. They use him to supply all the heavy hitters. And I guess when they get tired of certain people, they also use him to set people up. I've also reported at the time, because when this was going on with the fentanyl bodies and I knew that they were trying to put them on me, also reported at the time of Becky Beamer's situation. I don't know, have no exact details of it, but I did know the group that she was running with. And from watching the video from her Aunt Lori Salisbury, there were certain things that I had knew and I was able to connect that through. And so as time went on, that's when I really experienced state power. Because for me to report something and then for the body to be found and an autopsy not to be given to a year later and the only thing they could come up with was that she drowned? It took a year to find out that she drowned. That let me know that they had some type of power. It doesn't take a year to find out that somebody drowned. And then I see her aunt on the news, crying that she can't see the body or something of things of that nature. Like, can't somebody see the body if they only drown? I'm just here to speak up for what's right. Because I was a victim of it. My identity has been stolen. I'm sure fraud has been in my name. It's been times where I haven't gotten mail, like right now I haven't gotten mail for like a month, so I don't know if they got a P O box in my name. So this is pressure every day and the pressure is to get you to fold. Soon as I left here, a smear campaign started on me, but I'm kind of ready for it. I've been going through it so long, I'm not a victim anymore. I'm an advocate. So I'm not worried about any smear campaigns. I gotta stand up for what's right, whatever. And it's like, the community is suffering for. On my last couple of seconds, I want to name a few names, Lamont Jones, Tone Cook and Kevin Maxson. I challenge them to step up to the table because you can't walk the fence anymore when we all know what's going on. So I challenge them to step up to the table and do what's right. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Next up is Tom Connolly. I do not see him in the room. So we will move on to Gene Stilp.
Morning, Gene.
Good morning, Gene.
Gene Stilp, Fisher Creek Valley and TMI, no TMI restart. Just want to update you on a few things. One is that a few weeks ago, I sued the county for the actions of the emergency planning, non-emergency planning, the emergency response people in regard to their letter to school districts in regard to mandatory, mandatory actions that they mandate that school districts take. And so right now in the process, working with the solicitor and working with the outside counsel of figuring that out. And hopefully we can have that done so that the word mandatory is removed from that thought process. Secondly, want to update you on the, from a larger perspective on what's going on nuclear wise. You may have noticed in the past few weeks, a bunch of executive orders from Trump, which will have the effect of diminishing the ability of the NRC Nuclear Regulatory Commission to function, lowering the staff and also moving regulatory procedures around. And so the NRC, which is pretty bad now, will have even a worse reputation and a worse ability to function. Next, Constellation Energy, just in the past 10 days, has done, a few things have been done, Constellation Energy's world. One is that there was an executive order to keep a plant, a coal plant on in the Philadelphia area. And the Constellation has it heated on, which was scheduled to close, but it's going to be kept on, which combined with other things going on, Constellation has to put a burden on Constellation in regard to what the corporation would do in case of an accident. Secondly, Constellation has just in the past few days entered in contract to keep the Clinton plant in Illinois on. And Clinton plant in Illinois is one of the worst plants in the country. And they want to, they'll be doing a similar deal here, except the power with a large, a large AI group, which will keep the power in the grid though, which is interesting compared to here. Lastly, we have mentioned tours today in Dauphin County and also one of your concerns, especially Commissioner Priest has been the big benefit that comes to Dauphin County, Constellation. And I just want to read quickly from the biggest report on, see the latest report on tourism. Tourism Dauphin County, $4.1 billion in total economic impact. Recreation, $640 million. Transportation, $629 million. Food and beverage, $514 million. Retail, $382 million. Lodging, $362 million. My point is this, you have all this revenue coming in, why jeopardize that by the running of a risky nuclear power plant? All right? So that's just a point to balance things. Thank you very much.
We've exhausted our list. Anyone in the room for public comment? Three minute time, state your name prior to your comment.
Good morning.
Good morning. Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. Again, I wasn't going to say anything today. But what struck me is I'm holding 18 pages here, back to back, 36 pages of of agreements that you approved today. And in just being a witness to all that has been revealed about the corruption in this county over the last two years, I'd just like to remind us all that what we are talking about is people. Oh, this is a lot of words and contracts. Behind this is people, human beings. The human beings behind me here who put this together, the folks who are in the organizations that will carry these out and the people who receive these services. We are talking about human beings. And so when resources are taken to line pockets, that's taking money from real human beings. That has an effect on the services that are provided. When and in that, in my mind, in addition to looking at the corruption and who got what in ways that a lot of us do not have access to and would certainly find ourselves coming up against law enforcement pretty quickly if we did that, is that there are certain things that shouldn't be for profit. And those things are schools, hospitals and prison and re-entry services. Why? Because the education of our children is about educating human beings. It is not about making people money. Providing healthcare, particularly when people are at their lowest point, should not be about making money. And providing prisons or re-entry services, again, when people are at the lowest points in their lives, should not be for profit. And that includes Geo Group, which is the largest for-profit provider of carceral services in this county. So let us please remember that what we are talking about here are people, are human beings. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I didn't plan on coming in here today.
Excuse me, could you please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Kiosha Burks. I didn't plan on coming in here today, but over the past few months, it's been extremely hard for me getting a job. I've tried all resources, even going down to Career Link. I came from corporate America, so I kind of know how things go. It just saddens me because I know people in my community that are trying to change their lives and want somewhere to get some type of resource. I've been denied any type of information. Every time I go down there, it's, oh, we're in a meeting or, oh, we're gonna get somebody for you. And then nobody never comes. And it made me pay attention a little more because I have cousins, I have brothers, I have friends that been going through this before I got out of corporate America. And I just thought maybe they're just not trying hard enough. You know, sometimes it's easy to say that until I'm actually going through the actual experience myself. And it's like, okay, I'm from Dauphin County, so why am I being transferred to people that are in York or people that are in Lebanon? And it's like, I'm sending out follow-up emails to the career advisor that they have provided for me. And she's like, oh wait, okay, so change your career. Why would I do something like that if I'm coming to you all for help? So I'm just like, okay, now, I can only imagine people that aren't able to really comprehend certain things. So I know it's hard for them, you know, especially getting turned around, you just give up. It's like, okay, nobody wants to help me, I guess. I didn't even know I had the opportunity to come down here and talk freely to someone. But it is very, a big concern to me because I'm just wondering, like, is this something, you know, a lot of people are going through? I did try to go to news outlets, which I didn't want to do. But I got turned the way around too. So I'm starting to think, like, is this something that's purposely being done? I don't know, I'm just coming down here because I want answers. I don't want to cause any trouble. I don't want to come off like I'm trying to be difficult, any of that. I just want some type of help. I'm trying to change my life. And I mean, although I'm not in any trouble or have ever been in any trouble, but I want to just make a difference. So if you can all hear me out and at least try to do some type of investigation to make sure this isn't something that's being purposely done, I would greatly appreciate that.
Can I just ask that you stick around after the meeting and speak with our chief clerk, Mr. Hagerty? He might be able to get to understand what agencies you've been working with and where the barriers might have been. And if there's anything we can do to ensure that communication is timely.
Okay, thank you so much.
You talked about Career Link, right?
Yes, we are talking about Career Link.
She was at Career Link and did the assessment.
And I've been there every day, just to let y'all know, so.
And what you've expressed, I think, is advocacy for yourself, which I think is great. And quite frankly, I was looking through the jobs list here in the county that Mr. Hagerty provides to us on a weekly basis. Hopefully he can make you aware of those opportunities. But also the Career Link is something that we have represented from this county on the board. So if you can sort of send us or either write down the list of your complaints, we'll take the board representative from the county who is part of an eight-county consortium to Career Link and make sure that those issues and concerns that you've expressed to us are expressed at the board level and we can get you some answers.
Okay, I just want to, I don't want to cause any trouble, but I don't want nobody collecting a check and they're not helping people. That's the point of Career Link, you know?
We have, as Commissioner Hartwick alluded to, we have dozens of jobs posted right now. We are always looking for talented, hardworking people. So I'd be happy to share all of those listings with you.
Right, because I've seen it myself. So that definitely makes sense. Okay, I'll stick around though, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Move back Commissioner Hartwick, second back Commissioner Priest, adjourn.